From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Our afternoon session, board reconvene, roll call please.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. The, uh, now we need a report on actions taken in closed session, Ms. Rizan, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. In closed session this morning, you met on items eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-two. However, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. All items listed with a C or a CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We can act on those all in one motion, all in one motion. If any of you would like to make a separate comment about any of those items, now's the time to do that in just a moment. Or if you'd like to ask for separate consideration, it'll take a member of the board that'll actually, uh, ask for that. Uh, let me tell you what's on the consent calendar. It starts on page two of the afternoon agenda where it has item five. And on item five, I need to meet, read, uh, one addition into, uh, the recommended action, which is what is in all caps at the bottom of that item number. Starts with open hearing. The only thing I need to add to that is the very last line of that recommendation, it needs to say, "Of final parcel or subdivision map." So adding the words parcel or after the word final. Onto page three, uh, items seven through ten. Page four, items eleven and twelve, and then fifteen through seventeen. Page five, items eighteen through twenty. Six, items twenty-one through twenty-seven. Seven, items twenty-eight through thirty-three. Page eight, items thirty-four through forty-two. Page nine, items forty-three through fifty. And page ten, items fifty-one through fifty-eight. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any of the items I just mentioned? Or ask for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll return at the board and request a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'm sorry, and, uh, the motion needs to, uh, I went back to the morning agenda.
You want me to?
It's no longer morning. Um, yes, to, uh, motion on the consent calendar and to adjourn as the board of supervisors reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority.
So moved.
Motion. And a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. We're now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority. There's one item on the consent calendar, it is item one on page two. Is there anyone here that would like to remove that item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll return at the board and request a motion on the consent calendar for the Kern Sanitation Authority and to adjourn as such and reconvene as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District.
So moved. Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. We're now sitting as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. There's one item on that consent calendar, it is item two on page two. Anyone here that would like to remove that item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on that item and to adjourn as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvene as the board of supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absence. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Now we are on item three, which is public presentations. This is, portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public presentation? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and proceed. If there are others, could I get, get you to come to the microphone so we can get you the microphone quickly? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman. David Abassi with Central Valley Citizens for Responsible Government. I'm here today to talk about corruption and the upcoming election. It has come to our attention, based on our sources within the Bakersfield Police Department, that Supervisor Maggard has paid a bribe to Assistant Chief of Police Effen Demezthas in order to go after my Second Amendment rights. I believe this to be political retaliation, as there has been other instances where direct gun violence threats were made and such extreme measures were not pursued. That is something that's going through the processes now. Apparently, ironically, the chief of police or assistant chief was an actual physical threat, where he recently tried, uh, he assaulted, he beat and tried to rape his wife outside of a bar in a parking lot, unfortunately. So, you know, the su- the sergeant in charge didn't see these pre-incident concerning behaviors. Well, he did. The thing is, he, it's his boss, he wants to keep his job, and he's gonna do as told. So, that being the case, you know, we see this as a problem throughout Kern County's departments. So it is our intention to continue pursuing legal and political processes that will end the career politicians and bring in new officials that will be ethical, decent, and represent the interests of the people, rather than special interests. Kern County does deserve better. Thank you.
Chairman.
Supervisor Maggard.
It is remarkable, the comments that Mr. Abassi makes, and the fact that he makes them with no backup or factual basis. And, uh, you know, this is America, you can, you can say what you want, and we as public figures will sit here and endure it, but it is sad to me that this fellow besmirches so many people, time after time, without any evidence, because it didn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public presentations? Next item is item four, board member announcements and reports. Seeing none, we'll go to... Item thirteen, which is a, uh... Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, this is a requ- item six is our next item, is a request from California Veterans Assistance Foundation by Deborah Johnson to allow a twelve-unit veteran-supportive housing complex on .76 acres located at 604 Covey Avenue. Ms. Oviat.
Good afternoon. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, Assistant Director. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a twelve-unit veteran-supportive housing complex with associated common building and garden area. If we could have the map on the overhead. This is at 604 Covey Avenue, it's 450 feet north of Bell Avenue, east side of Covey. This piece of land is actually two parcels, it totals a little over 33,000 square feet. It is currently undeveloped, but it is designated for high-density development, R2, an apartment building, duplexes, multifamily. It has been designated in the Metro Bakersfield General Plan for quite some time. Access to the site is provided by Covey Avenue, which dead-ends 30 feet north from proposed project site. And the surrounding area is a mixture of single-family residents developed from the 1940s through the 1980s. And you'll notice the Beardsley Canal is located 90 feet north of the project site. This is a request, as we said, for a conditional use permit. Your board does not normally hear conditional use permits, but given the, uh, given the innovation of this project and the community support for this project from the perspective that most of it is being done with donations, the planning director has brought it to your board rather than through the Planning Commission. This is a small home housing complex, it's the first of its kind. We believe it's one of the first of the kind in California, and facilitates the county's goal to assist local veterans with affordable housing. The project will provide for permanent housing. There will be a presentation that goes into more detail on what these homes look like, but as of, um, last year, the building code has been changed to allow for these smaller developments. They do meet the code, building code. They would be, there would be twelve of them, 20-foot-by-20-foot dwelling units, they have a sleeping area, a bathroom, kitchen, living room, and a 20-foot-by-5-foot patio area. There'll be a central gathering area, a covered picnic space, a common building to include gathering space with a small laundry area, and in addition, there are several raised garden beds to plant fruits and vegetables. There are the normal nine parking spaces, as well as fencing and landscaping. It does have sewer and water from the Oildale Mutual Water Company, the North River Sanitation District. Construction materials and plans are going to be donated to build it. Development will be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, and it will be managed by the California Veterans Assistance Foundation. We have provided you with complete staff report that addresses, um, comments that have been submitted, and we have applied conditions. There are a total of 34 conditions that would have to be complied with in order to implement this project, and staff believes that this new type of veteran-supporting housing complex will provide an exceptional opportunity for affordable new infill housing development that still continues to be compatible with the neighborhood, since it is not an apartment complex, it is actually just smaller homes. The recommended conditions of approval will require the development of the project to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, as well as the ongoing management by the California Veterans Assistance Foundation. With that, the department recommendation is to adopt a resolution recommending findings approving conditional use permits subject to recommended conditions of approval. You do have an addendum with some additional comments from the Airports Department, which we have addressed, and there are conditions that address those comments. That completes my presentation, and Ms. Deborah Johnson is here as the applicant to present her project.
Good afternoon. I got an opportunity to talk this morning, so again, thank you Chairman Couch, Supervisor Maggard, and Supervisor Gleason for allowing us to come, and with me is...
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Heather Kimmel, the Assistant Executive Director at the Housing Authority, and I'm also on the board for CVAF.
So, the California Veterans Assistance Foundation is Kern County's longest-standing provider of veteran housing needs. We have been serving this community since 2000, and we have over 20 years' experience owning and managing properties throughout the city of Bakersfield and Kern County. All of our properties are located in residential neighborhoods, so what we're proposing isn't anything any different than what we currently do. So, on the slides, we're showing you one of our properties in the Oleander area, another property in our Oildale area, and I want to make sure that people understand, if you look on the outside of our buildings, our name and our telephone number is publicly displayed. If there's any cause for concern at any point in time in our properties, our locations, anybody can feel free to contact us and call us. In addition to apartment-style complexes that we currently own and manage, we have three separate three-bedroom homes throughout the city. One of them is in central Bakersfield, one is in southwest Bakersfield, and another one, again, in the Oildale area. So as you can see, by looking at these properties and facilities, we take great pride in our layout, our landscaping. We have professional landscapers that come in weekly to make sure that we are good stewards of our neighborhood, and that we make sure that our, our properties are not a nuisance, and that we comply with and kind of fit into the rest of the neighborhood dwellings. So, we thought long and hard about a perfect name for this project, which I can tell you is very, very difficult. Our original concept was something called Veteran Village, but if you Google Veteran Village, every state in the country has one, and we didn't want to duplicate that. And we had an opportunity when we, before we started proposing this project, to meet the neighborhood on Covey Avenue, and discovered that the people there, they are proud, they are an amazing community, we would be very grateful to be there and be part of that neighborhood, so we are gonna name this project Covey Cottages for Veterans. Our tar- target population is low-income veterans aged 55 and older, and some of the amenities on-site will include security features, and security features will mean fencing all the way around the property with a gate that requires the veteran to have a code for access. We will have security cameras, and SitRep Security has also agreed to provide mobile roaming security services for this property. We will have an onsite manager, so a veteran that we select to put into the housing will be responsible when staff isn't there, to be able to provide for safety and security for not only the residences or the clients that we have living there, but our property and the neighborhood. It is critically important for us to make sure that safety and security is paramount for everybody involved in this project. We will have case management. So we will have a part-time case manager who will be there to assist veterans with their daily activities, and get them connected with benefits or services should they need them. The key to this is affordable rent. Across the nation, 1.4 million veterans live below the poverty level. We do a ton of projects, and we talk at significant lengths what to do with veterans that are homeless, but we are not addressing veterans that are just poor and disenfranchised. This property will change that. We will be, this will allow a veteran who is not eligible for subsidized housing an opportunity to pay full rent without a subsidy, even if they are low or extremely low income. One of the great things with community involvement is community classes. We have a lot of agencies that have come up to us that want to partner, Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, we have the Patel Foundation. They want to come into our property and provide classes, like nutrition, we're gonna have a garden, health screening, anything that we can add into this will be a benefit for our clients, and the ultimate goal would be to help out the neighborhood and the community as well. So, location, location, location. Why this piece of land? Well, I see that Dick Taylor is in the room, and it's honestly because of Dick Taylor. Patriots of Kern donated a piece of land to us in 2015. Dick called me up one day and said, "Hey, Debbie, we have a piece of property that we would like to donate, but the condition is that you need to provide permanent housing for veterans. Can you do that?" And we didn't know what we were gonna do at the time with it, but we said absolutely. So the property came to us by way of a donation, it's a fantastic lot, and a fantastic location, because it's right around the corner from another one of the properties that we own. Again, we, it's near, currently owned and managed properties, and it's conveniently located near stores, public transportation, and healthcare services for our clients. If our target population is 55 and older, we need to be cognizant of their ability to obtain services and be able to make sure that they can get to the grocery store and the healthcare services. So this is just kind of like a larger overview of what Covey Cottages is gonna look like.
So, it was mentioned earlier, this, this development is a community gathering. Community is key in bringing this together. It's a community project, construction is all provided in-kind. The funding for the permitting and the other necessary items outside of what is provided as in-kind materials is donated through community foundations, organizations, and individuals. CVAF is going to assist populations through this development that are not currently able to find homes. There's a population that don't qualify for vouchers through the VA program, and this, as Debbie mentioned earlier, will allow them to afford rents without a subsidy. So some of the partners and contributors for this development, just to name a few, there's many more, the Patel Foundation, John Baufans Homes, Health Through Wholeness, Mcintosh &amp; Associates, Rios Design Studios, Dignity Health, Patriots of Kern, Housing Authority, Golden Empire Affordable Housing, Bakersfield Family Medical Center, Chevron, the Lake Family Foundation, the Mashburn Transportation, and many others, as I mentioned. We couldn't do this without the community, it wouldn't be possible. So we're very grateful for this innovative design, this innovative concept for housing, and the community rallying together to make it happen.
Any questions for us?
The public may have some questions, so let's ask them. Any other comments by staff before we open it up? Okay, so is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on this particular Actually, I should say, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask what those people here that would like to speak. Yes, ma'am.
We got a little bit of a chance to speak with, I'm sorry, your name.
Deborah.
Deborah, um, prior to you starting this, but maybe I didn't understand, because the way she explained it was, this is gonna be different than the one on Decatur, but the way I understood what she was just bringing to you is, it's the same thing. So... Also, am I allowed to ask for a penance?
You can ask us any questions, but then I'll, I'll turn to either our staff or members of the public if they'd like to answer.
Okay, and then...
Could we get you to give us your name as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle. Leave it.
Thank you.
Um, and, and my concern is that, I know people that live by the one on Decatur, and they have a lot of problems over there. We have a lot of kids on our street, myself, my neighbors, all little kids who like to play outside, ride their bikes. I'm, I'm just kind of curious what kind of measures will be in place to make sure our kids are safe, and still able to play and act like little six-year-olds, you know? I support the veterans, I just want to make sure our kids are safe. Does that make sense?
Sure does.
Guys are giving me the stink eye, I'm sorry.
No, it makes sense. The kids are not playing in the street, right?
Yeah, they ride their bikes out there. It's a dead-end street, so they ride their bikes around there, 'cause it's a dead-end street, no one comes...
Well, that's, that's riding your bike and playing in the street, in my mind, are two different things.
I'm sorry?
If they're riding their bike, they're perfectly fine. If they're playing in the street...
Yeah, they're not laying down in the middle of the street.
Yeah, but it's a cul-de-sac, and there's almost no traffic in there, right?
Yeah, there's, nobody comes down there, really, so...
Right.
Most of the time. And I guess that's just my question. I wanted some clarification, 'cause we were told that it's gonna be different, but from what I just understood, it's the same thing. And then I wanted to know what measures are gonna be put in place to make sure our children are safe and still able to play outside.
We got it. Those two questions, I'll try to get you an answer. Any other speakers on the public hearing? Dick?
Chairman Couch, honorable members of the board, Dick Taylor, and as Deb Johnson mentioned, I, I represent Patriots of Kern, we did donate the property on Covey Avenue, and I took some notes just so I wouldn't forget, 'cause I wanted to make some, some, and that was a good point that you just brought up, 'cause I, we have, I, we've had rental properties before, I've been a landlord, and we always want to make sure that we're good neighbors, and so when we had this property, we wanted to make sure that we had somebody that was also gonna be a good steward to the neighborhood, and as was apparent with the photos, you could see, they, they take good care of them. So, the, the points I want to make, and that is, and we just saw, has a presentation this morning about homelessness, so the issue of homelessness needs new thinking and new community action. This concept of a community of tiny homes for veterans provides not just a place to live, but a place to belong, as a neighborhood. And we particularly want to thank, and Ms. Johnson showed a list of all the members of the committee, not only that have given their money, but have generously given their time and talents to make this project happen. With services and support, I know that our veterans will be treated with respect their commitment to our country deserves. And in closing, I want to say, I want to ask that you approve this project so that, and I know there's a lot of stipulations in place, as Ms. Oviat mentioned, there's thirty-some-odd stipulations that they have to meet, so it's no easy task, and it's not, you know, it's a lot of things you gotta do as a landlord. But I ask that you approve this project so we can all get to work providing these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you'd like to speak on this item, could I get you to come to the front row, and so we can get you to the microphone quickly? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Maria Dominguez, and I just had a couple of questions. I know they're veterans, and they're 55-plus, but I wanted to know, how else are they going to select the ones that are gonna live there? How are they gonna be vetted? How are they going to be vetted? And I also would like to be, they said they're going to have, I guess, a supervisor or an onsite manager. Is that going to be 24/7? I'm assuming.
We're going to get you, anybody who asks a question, we're going to try to get all those answered after we're done with the public hearing.
Okay. And also, since it's going to be about, what is it, 12 veterans there, and I guess other people that might be working there, is that, is that going to be a lot of auto traffic in there? Because those roads are not very good right there at all. And we have more traffic, it's just going to make it worse, especially the construction companies or whatever they're going to be going through there. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Chairman, and Board, Rebecca Moreno with Community Action Partnership of Kern. I'm coming, Rebecca Moreno. I'm coming in support of the California Veterans Assistance Foundation and ask that you approve this. I know firsthand of the great care that California Veterans Assistance Foundation places in their homes and with their staff and with their clients as well. So, in any support that we can give with coordinated entry, we are here to support them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, it's a public hearing. If you'd like to speak, we ask that you come to the front row so we can get you to the microphone quickly. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Marty Sharples. I'm the President of the Income Property Association of Kern, and we just want to give our support to the, the Veterans Village. We think it's a good thing for the community. They're responsible landlords, they're part of our association, and we, we support them.
Thank you.
I don't have anything against this project.
State your name for the record, sir.
Francis C. Martinez.
Thank you.
I have nothing against this project. What I've seen, I was mailed a letter, and I have six units plus a house on this Covey Avenue. The street has no four, no stop sign at the corner before the last, I don't know if this is addressed, it's not written in here, but that needs a stop sign on that corner. And also, the street is, like the lady said, needs some work. There's no curb and gutter on it, and I'd like to see at least those improvements put in that street, you're going to have that kind of traffic going through. Because once this gets done, there's a couple more empty properties there.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez, do you mean at the corner of Covey and Bell?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I just didn't see that in here, any addressments to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Josie Malloy, and I am a homeowner, homeowner on Covey Avenue. And the buildings are going to be put right across the street from where I live. And anyway, I was totally against this idea to begin with because of all the trouble they have over on Decatur. And, but after talking to, to the ladies here, and they assured me that there's going to be an onsite manager, and if we have any problems, then we are to call them or the Sheriff's Department, and everything will be taken care of. So now I am in support of it.
Okay.
And I think it'd be great for our veterans.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments during the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll return it to the board, but I'll ask Ms. Oviat if she can take a stab at answering some of those questions.
Thank you, Chairman Couch, Members of the Board. First of all, the recommended condition that you have the staff report is Item 2, approves this as a 12-unit supportive housing complex. Supportive housing in the zoning ordinance is actually defined. It means housing with no limit on the length of stay that's occupied by the target population, in this case, veterans, and is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing, improving his or her health status, and maximizing his or her ability to live and, when possible, work in the community. So, this has not been approved as 12 homes on a piece of property. It's being approved as a supportive, a supportive housing complex. And therefore, it is built into the conditional use permit that that's how it would be managed. We'd also like to note on Item 5I, that under encroach permit, the applicant will be improving the frontage of the property to type A subdivision standards, that's half width of the street, as well as curb, gutter, sidewalk, drive approach, asphalt, concrete, and the necessary tie-in. So they will be actually bringing improvements to the frontage of their lot, and given that they're on a cul-de-sac, they're going to be, you know, bringing it around the front of the lot. And we're available for questions.
Did that answer all the questions that were raised?
No. I'll go through them.
Want to go there? Okay, Supervisor Maggard.
You want me to do that now?
However you'd like to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a, maybe Deb Johnson can help us, and maybe Laura Lyne-Cray can help us. What is the process by which we will vet? One of the questions was, how do we vet those who will be residents of the project?
Okay, so California Veterans Assistance Foundation works within our continuum of care through the coordinated entry system, as Rebecca Moreno mentioned, through CAP-K. So veterans will be identified and placed on a veteran by-name list. And in order to be put on that veteran by-name list, they have to go through a very significant assessment. So they go through, it's called, thank you, Heather, VI Spada. So it's a vulnerability index. So we're going to determine what their vulnerability is, we're going to verify their veterans' status, we're going to determine what their critical housing need is. So this is intended to be for veterans that fit this model of housing, not just anybody and anybody who wants to live there, because believe it or not, we already have people calling us and trying to get on the list. And there isn't a list. So to qualify, the veteran has to be on the by-name list, they have to be determined, we have to determine their veteran eligibility status, and they have to meet the conditions of low income or extremely low income. And their vulnerability score needs to be at a high enough level that this is the appropriate permanent housing, or the appropriate housing placement for the right person at the right time. So, it's going to be a lengthy process to make sure that we are matching the right veteran. We will do criminal background checks to make sure that we're not going to put anybody at risk or put the community at risk. And as far as like children go, many of the veterans we serve have children and grandchildren themselves, and this housing allows them to even, it'll be one to three people. So it could be a veteran with their dependent and a child living in this unit. So we believe that a percentage of our population are already going to have children, and safety and security will be paramount for us with the neighborhood and actually the children in those housing complexes.
So, there is some concern about, there's so much talk about homelessness nowadays. I just, I'd like to hear you explain, you know, for the public's benefit, this isn't, these aren't gentlemen who are living in a pup tent in the river, and they're not just rolling up with their shopping cart and moving into these things. There's a whole, whole process before that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So with regard to the onsite management, is it 24/7?
We will have, so one of the veterans that will be selected to live there will be the onsite manager. They will have access to the staff on-call list, and we're going to provide that to the neighborhood. And again, we're going to have, you know, our, our telephone number is going to be on the building. We're committed to making sure that this project is safe for the community and safe for the veterans that are also going to be living there and the property. So many people have donated time and energy, and they're going to develop, or, you know, donate resources. We want to make sure we're good stewards to everybody, including that community, for the property that is going into this project.
Thank you. One, another question that was asked by one of the residents was, with 12 residents and a staff person, it sounds like the staff person will be one of the residents.
Correct.
It sounds like, there was concern about parking and traffic and things like that. So can you address that for us?
So, in the, the current properties that we manage or the programs that we manage, really about a third of our veterans actually own POVs. And when you're talking about somebody...
Cars.
Yes, I'm sorry, privately-owned vehicles. That's the military term coming out of me. So they own their own vehicle. They own their own vehicle. So, we suspect, and especially somebody that's 55 and older with a low income, they're not going to be able to afford vehicles, so the, and two of the, the slots are going to be ADA accessible. And so we believe the number of parking spots is going to be appropriate for the amount of veterans that are going to be living there, given our current housing programs that we operate.
Thank you. Ms. Oviat, could you address the traffic and also the issue of whether or not a stop sign at Bell and Covey?
Covey.
Covey, yeah. Longo.
According to the neighborhood, it's Covey, which we're adopting.
Yeah. I think of my track coach at BC, Mr. Covey. But Laura Lyne, could you address those?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair. The nine parking spaces with two of them being handicapped are sufficient for this project. We are required by state law to make allowances for these types of projects in regards to parking reductions. I want to note that this property is zoned R2. It is over 33,000 square feet. It could have significantly more apartments on it. That is part of the Metro Bakersfield general plan traffic. And so it has been appropriately designated. As far as a stop sign, you would have to ask Mr. Pope to address that.
Mr. Pope, could you join in our conversation?
Through the chair, Supervisor Maggard. We have looked at and evaluated traffic impacts and didn't determine a need for one, but we will certainly watch and see if one develops.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that answered all the questions that the neighborhood asked, and my notes, I think that addressed them. So I'll, I'll come back and have some more comments in a moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for making sure their questions were answered.
Supervisor Gleason?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Debbie, this is why I'm so proud to live in Kern County. Thank you very much for all you do for the vets. Dick, a living legacy, man. Just, it keeps on going. Thank you for your performance in getting this and whatever role you played, making this all happen. Just another tribute to the work you did as our veteran service officer. I appreciate it. I'm going to make a motion to support this, this, this deal.
Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. Thank you. I, I understand that there is some degree of concern by the neighbors, and this is a, a new thing that we're trying with these, you know, a lot of people call this the Tiny Home Project. I think it's a solution that, this will be very carefully monitored and managed. I assure you, I'm the supervisor for your area. If you have problems, you can call me and I will help you ring the bell to do that. But I assure you that long before I have to do that, Debbie will, I'm sorry, the, the organization will be very responsive and keen to your concerns, so, but, but please feel free to call my office if you think you have other issues. Mr. Martinez, if, if the traffic, there are some very specific rules about when a stop sign can be put in and when it cannot be put in, and it has to meet this, this list of warrants. It has to be warranted for that to occur. So we will, Mr. Pope will help us monitor that, and if that becomes an issue, you feel free to call my office as well. You think it's an issue right now? So, so...
A lot of people traveling with shopping carts, scooters, motorized vehicles, plus pedestrians.
Sir, I'm sorry, we closed the public hearing. If you want to be recognized, I need to ask you to come to the microphone.
So I'll, I'll repeat what he, what he said if you don't mind, Mr. Martinez, you're welcome to come up if you like. But he, he's concerned about existing problems in the neighborhood now. So, Mr. Pope, could you work with me to make sure that we are monitoring that? And if, if we need to interview the people that live in the neighborhood and whatnot, let's, let's make sure we do that to see if, if a stop sign becomes warranted or not, or if there's some other traffic control measure that we might, that we might take in the area. But I, I am confident that the benefits will way outweigh the concerns, and I assure you that I will help you be responsive, help government be responsive to you if this, if there are any problems. And I'm sure that the organization that manages it will, will be responsive as well because a lot is riding on making sure that our veterans are served. So I will, I am happy to second Supervisor Gleason's motion to support.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, I'll recognize you. Give us your name again.
You know, the traffic there on Covey, it, it is a problem. And we get a lot of traffic down through there. We really do. And we have a lot of speeders, so I yell at them to slow it down. So, if we do, I know my neighbor's daughter was in, was hit here just recently by another vehicle, and caused a lot of damage to her car. And so it is an ongoing problem. So I understand Mr. Martinez's complaints, and, and I understand this, you know, because we all have the complaints. So, if anything can be done, you know, to, to get those stop signs in, that would be a great, great thing, especially for our new veterans that's going to be coming in.
Very good. I assure you, Mr. Pope and I will have a conversation about that very thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Martinez, for bringing it to our attention.
I hesitate to make this comment, but I'll make it anyway. I'm going to support this motion, obviously, and this, and this project. Wherever I move, if I could get Ms. Johnson to vet my neighbors for me, I would, I would appreciate that. So I think that situation is at least a positive one for, for the neighborhood, and I appreciate the work that you all do. You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three eyes, two absents, Supervisor Perez and Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today, and thank you for your comments. That takes us to Item 13, which is a General Plan and Housing Element Annual Report. Ms. Oviat?
Thank you. As noted, the government code 54, sorry, 6,504, 65400 mandates that all the counties submit an annual report on the status of the general plan and progress towards implementation, as well as implementation of the housing element. This report is comprehensive and has a lot of details in it, so I'd just like to give you a, a small overview. This is the report for 2019. It's required, it's required to be submitted to the state by April 1st. We did submit it in March. It's required to report also specifically to HCD on the housing element separately. So the general plan report goes to the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and the housing element is under a particular kind of format through HCD. The housing element is on an eight-year cycle in Kern County, so this is the 2015 to 2023. It was approved by the state as in compliance on June 3, 2016, after adoption. I know that this is part of the entire conversation that the state of California and that your board has been having on housing, a variety of income levels in our community. It requires this by state law that sufficient land be zoned for higher-density units needed to achieve the regional housing needs allocation, which is called RENA. In 2015, the RENA, which is managed by the Kern Council of Governments and is given a number for the entire county by the State of California Department of Finance, is then a parse, you know, allocated out to the various cities and the county. The county's allocation is 21,040 units of extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate housing. To put this in perspective, the entire county, unincorporated area, did approximately 1,659 building permits for single-family homes. So as you see, we have a large gap between the Department of Finance and the state of California's allocation to us of how much we should be building and what we're actually building. That does not stop us. We continue to work with our partners at the Housing Authority and nonprofit builders. Over the past three years, we've built 543 affordable housing units that have actually been constructed. And right now, the Housing Authority has 118 additional housing units in the financing stages. That financing is a combination of a variety of money. Some of it is your federal housing and urban development home program money, there's tax credit incentive money and other funding sources that they bring together to, to build this housing. The full report has been provided to you and provides details on also our implementation of fairer housing goals and actions by your board to designate additional higher-density opportunities for development. This completes our presentation, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Oviat. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on this item? If there are... this item? If there are others, could we get you to come to the microphone, or excuse me, the front row, so we can get you to the microphone? Please state your name and proceed.
Hello, Adi Yinka Glover with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. I did want to ask that for my comments, they could go beyond the two minutes. If that's okay?
Well, let's see how interesting they are.
Okay. And so according to the 2015-2023 housing element, over 9,000 Kern County low-income and extremely low-income households are cost burden, paying anywhere from 30% to 50% or more of their income for housing. That coupled with the county's responsibility to complete housing programs and make sites available to meet the regional housing needs allocations, makes an annual report a crucial document in assessing the progress that is made. In March, I reached out to Craig Murphy from the Planning and Natural Resources Department to inquire about the Kern County report. I was informed that it would go before the Board of Supervisors when it was complete. Because I was aware of the April 1 deadline to submit the report, I monitored the agendas in April and May, looking specifically for the report. I was, I also attempted to follow up with planning staff in May by phone and email, but received no replies. On May 31, I reached out to Ms. Oviat directly to inform her of my inquiries and requested a copy of the report. I was informed that Mr. Murphy would provide me a copy of the report the following week, and that the APR had been on the Board of Supervisors' agenda under the miscellaneous section. I was not given the report the following week. In fact, I had to ask Ms. Oviat for a copy of the report on June 14. I was, I was provided an incomplete, my apologies, I was provided an incomplete copy of the report, and I had to follow up regarding it. I had also asked whether a public meeting had occurred prior to its submission to HCD. I was informed by Ms. Oviat, one was not required, and again, I was told that it was put on the miscellaneous agenda. I provided her with a copy, I provided her with the statute that she had mentioned earlier, Government Code Section 65400, specifically Section A to B, which states in part, "The report shall be considered at an annual public meeting before the legislative body where members of the public shall be allowed to provide oral testimony and written comments." I asked what date it was on the miscellaneous agenda, because I had searched for it and I could not find it. I also offered to schedule a call to discuss this issue further. The public meeting is a crucial part of the process, because it gives the public the opportunity to provide comments directly to the Board of Supervisors about progress being made on the housing element programs, highlighting what is going well and some areas of improvement. Upon receiving a complete copy of the annual progress report on June 21, we did inform the Planning Department that it was incomplete and not in full compliance with the law. It included certain policies that are in, that are found in the housing element, but it didn't include the actual programs as required by the law. We informed not only the Planning Department, but also the State Agency, HCD, on the issue. HCD did require the county to provide an amended report to their department in August. Now to get to the actual document, we do have some concerns with its content. We believe that the status statements are broad and often duplicated and are not fully responsive to what is being committed in the housing element programs. For example, Programs 1.3.4 and 2.1.7 have the same broad status update with no mention of action taken. Programs, Program 2.1.4 seeks to help two households annually purchase homes. The programs state that they will apply annually. Table D reads that the timeframe in the housing element is as available, which is not what is actually in the housing element. Program 5.1.6 is missing completely. We asked residents at a recent community meeting if they were familiar with several of the housing programs, especially the ones that talked about outreach and education and mentioned flyers being sent out to the community. We were informed that they were not aware of these programs. This means perhaps that outreach strategies that are already in place should be amended to make sure that the public is better informed about the housing resources that are available to them. Each, the annual progress report indicates 2.2.2 is complete and 2.2.3 is ongoing, yet county documents show that the Housing and Community Development found that the rezoning that it's relying on, the Grapevine specific plan, does not meet the requirements of state law as insured adequate sites. This is an important obligation to ensure adequate sites to meet the housing needs for all income levels. We request that the Board direct staff to engage in a process to ensure that the programs mentioned are fully addressed. Government Code Section, the same one mentioned previously, requires that the county conduct an annual progress report each year that includes actions taken by local government towards completion of the programs and status of the local government's compliance with the deadlines in the housing element, as well as to conduct a public hearing by April 1 to take public comment. We ask that moving forward, the draft is released for the public to make comment in advance of that deadline, and that the public meeting be, have, take place prior to April 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I am Empress Noenteziki-Lelo, and I am here as a resident, an activist, and a senior citizen. Really grateful for this group, Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability, here to join my voice with them, that every citizen, every resident, has a right to safe, clean, affordable housing that raises their quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers today? Ms. Oviat, would you like to respond to anything you heard?
I would. Thank you very much, and I appreciate Ms. Glover's specific comments. First of all, I'd like Mr. Murphy to address, it is not accurate that HCD has said we have not rezoned. It is true that they did not accept the way that the Grapevine project, which your board has to reconsider, but we did find that we had designated enough higher density. Mr. Murphy, could you explain that process, please?
Thank you, Ms. Oviat. Once the Grapevine project was approved, we had provided some comments to HCD indicating that with that approval, that addressed, that addressed the needed land to be designated for higher-density residential development to meet those two density requirements and programs that were identified. HCD explained to us that they had some concerns with that, and we went back and forth with them for a number of days and weeks, kind of trying to address their concerns. Part of what they had asked us to do was reevaluate our existing inventory. When we did that, we relooked at all of our properties that did not have development on them, and we actually found additional land that was not included when the housing element was adopted in 2015. We provided all of that information to HCD, and they have said that we were in compliance with any of the requirements, and we have not heard after that last correspondence that we are not meeting any of the land areas that we were supposed to, and that we're not in compliance with those programs.
Members of the Board, the breakdown this year in the housing element is the first year this has happened. We have brought the housing element before April 1 to your board every year. HCD changed the way that the housing element is submitted. It's now a very complicated online spreadsheet. Prior to that, we had done it in our own format, brought it to your board, given people the opportunity for public input. HCD had changed the process. This is a breakdown of our staff. We apologize to the public. We do not find, however, we have provided the information to HCD, and they have called it in compliance. The specific comments on the housing element, the housing element was adopted in 2015 and goes to 2023. As you know, we are, I, we are required to zone properties. We are not required to build them. Many of the issues for affordable housing are financing, sewer, water. We have serious sewer issues in metropolitan Bakersfield that we're trying to work out with the city of Bakersfield. There are a variety of issues on why affordable housing is not built, but your board every year uses every dollar that you're given by the federal government in the home program to help the Housing Authority and others to build affordable housing. And we will continue to bring forward innovative projects, such as the Tiny Homes Project, which could provide, you know, provide that type of housing in a different way, at a lower cost. But many of the goals in the housing element are aspirational. We do the best we can with the budget that we receive. We have been in a fiscal crisis for at least Ms. Lawson, when, four years, five years. The Planning Department is not a public safety department, and we have done the best we can with our staff. Our community development is fully funded by the appropriations we get from Congress, and those have been cut every year. We are very proud of the work that we have done. We will endeavor to communicate with Ms. Glover's organization in a more effective way. However, this was not any intention not to give her the information, but rather a procedural breakdown. So we have now provided the public hearing to you. We have heard those concerns. Before April 1 of next year, when this is due to HCD, we will make sure to get it done ahead of time and put it on, put it on your board's agenda. I would note that it involves us getting statistics from a variety of different avenues, and that is one of the things that slows us down in providing the information. That completes our presentation. Once again, we're available for any other questions you may have on this particular report, and it is, the recommendation is to receive and file.
I don't see any lights on by members of the board, so just ask for a motion to receive and file.
Motion.
I would just like to say, so I'm hearing you saying, I'm going to support this effort. But I hear you saying that we're in compliance, things are going well, but Mrs. Glover senses a communication problem, and we, we've heard her, and we understand we're going to improve that communication problem.
That's correct.
Alleviate that communication problem, and so that we are communicating better and we're marching along together in this process. I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three ayes, two absents. Supervisor Perez, Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, Ms. Oviat and Ms. Murphy, and thank you for your, your comments today, for coming today. That takes us to item 14, which is a proposed resolution authorizing a submission of an application and acceptance of Senate Bill 2 funds to update local planning documents and land use ordinances to increase affordable housing. Ms. Oviat.
Members of the Board, I took this off consent because I wanted the public and your board to know, this is another one of those tools that's been provided to us by the state to attempt to assist us in providing housing, permanent housing, for a variety of income levels. This is a non-competitive grant. Every county and city was awarded a certain amount of one-time money. The city of Bakersfield was also awarded $625,000, as the county is. It needs to be applied for by November, and it is intended, if you ask for it, for a, a, a specific types of criteria in planning. If you ask to use it for other things, then it becomes somewhat of a competitive grant. We have identified things that do qualify, which we believe would be very useful. As you heard Ms. Glover discuss about the amount of land that we have designated, we are going to use this money in conjunction with our general plan update to review the amount of land zoned for multifamily development, resolve any inconsistencies between the general plan and zoning, look at expediting and streamlining appropriate projects. This has been a request from the Housing Authority. This has been a request from the Continuum of Care that we review and see if there's a way that we can help them get these projects into production faster. We're going to create a searchable GIS-based inventory of vacant, infrastructure-ready residential lots in the unincorporated communities. We believe this will help a number of communities. We have, Supervisor Scrivner had to leave, but we have issues in Mojave, which is a disadvantaged community, finding housing for the working people who actually have jobs, but they still can't find a place to live because of the condition of the housing. We have that problem in Inyo Kern and other places. This searchable GIS would provide for the public, developers, affordable housing advocates, a way of identifying these lots quickly, and then hopefully we can get some housing built on them. We want to create a streamlined, we want to explore with the community a streamlined process for use of tiny homes as permanent and transitional housing. And we don't know, we want to get feedback from the community on what types of lots might be appropriate for that, what kinds of, of development standards, we call them, to put on that, where instead of going through a long process, you could go through a shorter process to have that transitional housing. And then one of the important things that the state just did a report on is there is no place in California-wide to find an online fee estimator. This is one of the biggest complaints of the building industry and others, that you can't tell how much it's going to cost to build anything. We're going to take a swing at it. We have the Acela program, which is our online permitting, which BID is also integrated into, and we're going to attempt to create an online fee calculator for an estimate of housing permit costs. There would be some caveats on it, because there are some changes, but it would, it could pull in your school fees, it could pull in the connection fees for a variety of different things. This is a way to help our community with transparency. How do I understand what it's going to cost to build a house is one of, you know, what, what does the county charge for something? It's one of those line items that sometimes they have to go to various departments to find. We are going to work with all the various departments, and, and we already have the schools built in. We have the water districts built into the Acela program. So I think with our smart GIS people and with a little, a little thinking, perhaps we can try to get this online fee estimator, which many, many people have indicated to us would be very, very useful for affordable housing. The, we would be, we have coordinated with the state assistance team, who's confirmed these tasks are eligible for the award. There's no match required for this award. Some of the work will be done through the general plan, and we already have funding through that, through the general plan surcharge. Therefore, we are, we do require a resolution. It is one of the requirements of the application, and we appreciate County Council working with us on providing you a resolution. So it's recommended that your board approve and adopt the attached resolution authorizing submission of the proposed project application, acceptance of awarded funds, and authorize the Director of Planning and Natural Resources to sign any award agreement and grant documents upon review and approval by County Council as to form.
The ability to do the fee calculation sounds like an excellent lean Six Sigma project as well. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on this, this item? Yes, sir. Please come forward. And I know I have a broken record, but if there are others of you that would like to speak, could I get you to come to the front row?
Good afternoon, Chairman, and Supervisors and staff. My name is Troy Hightower. I'm a local consultant, and I work on economic and community development projects, and I'm here to support what Ms. Oviat is proposing. I see that, how this will allow us to meet some of the bullet points in the staff report, including state planning priorities. So in addition to some of the zoning updates for residential, which I think are good ideas, this effort will also help prepare developers and organizations that want to apply for state-funded housing projects, such as the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Strategy. So I do urge your support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, I'll return to the board for questions, comments, or action.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three ayes, two absents. Supervisor Perez, Supervisor Scrivner.
I think that takes us to the end of the afternoon agenda. Need a motion to adjourn. Need a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September 17th at 9:00 a.m. Any, anybody? Without objection, we adjourn.